Yeah, okay. Are we ready to go? Ready?
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education's regular meeting, June 14th, 2023. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Take the roll, please.
Who is it?
Here.
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 Right.
Here.
Here.
We have forum.
Marvelous. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We look forward to welcoming back our students in September. Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement?
Yes. So, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral lands of the Hochunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Hearing no changes, we will accept by acclamation. Next, Board Administrative Reports. President's Report. We are happy that it is summer and looking forward to some well-time off for some of our, most of our teachers, staff, and administrators. And while we say that, we know how hard they're working over the summer, so get as much time off as you possibly can. Recognition of retirements. We have one retiree tonight, and this is Carol Tritt. She's an assistant cook from Oshkosh North High School, and she has been with the district since 2017. We wish Carol all the best, many years of happiness, health, and enjoyment of life post-retirement. Superintendent's Report.
All right, great. So, we'll start with some exciting news. So, we're excited to share that two of our Oshkosh area school district employees are 2023 Making a Difference Award recipients, as recognized by the Wisconsin Council of Administrators of Special Services. Congratulations to Andrea Fisher, True Academy Program Coordinator, and Kristen Bartelt, Oaklawn Elementary Behavior Interventionist. Just a little bit about them. As the program coordinator, True Andrea's task was supporting the needs of some of the most challenging and vulnerable students on a daily basis. Despite this challenge, Andrea's warming and friendly demeanor, along with her outgoing personality, rub off on the students and staff to create a positive environment in True. And as the Behavioral Interventionist at Oaklawn, Kristen serves as a valuable resource for teachers who have their true, whose true gift lives working directly with students. Kristen has a knack for de-escalating students when they become upset and is a master of building relationships with them. Kristen's very popular among the students at Oaklawn and serves as a trusted adult for many. So, award recipients received a surprise visit, and we're grateful, we are grateful for all that they do with our students and staff. So, congratulations. Next school year, 11 students from Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West will be engaged in our School to Work program. This reimagined learning experience, in partnership with area manufacturers and Fox Valley Technical College, provides an opportunity for high school seniors to earn their high school diploma while immersed in a paid capstone manufacturing experience. During the month of May, along with supportive adults and representatives from their business employer, we took part in a School to Work Signing Day. This celebratory signing event allowed students to put pen to paper and make their commitment to their career dreams a reality. And many of the students began their School to Work Youth Apprenticeship positions on June 5th. Others will start on September 4th. So, we wish all of these students the best as they pursue their career interests and extend gratitude to many of our business partners in the community for making those opportunities possible. So, I had an opportunity to, last month, with our administrators and school board members to take a tour of Vell Phillips Middle School. Exciting to see that construction wrapping up as we look forward to welcoming students and staff at the start of the 2023-2024 school year. Additional information for the public open house will be shared soon. That public open house will be in a date in September. We look forward to sharing those incredible learning spaces with our community this fall. The Oshkosh North High School Marching Band debuted its uniforms at this year's Oshkosh Memorial Day procession. Donning new uniforms signals the end of a successful $75,000 fundraising campaign. The band program was able to purchase 150 new uniforms to support its growing program with financial support from the school district, Oshkosh North, our district education foundation, as well as private donors and fundraising activities. Additionally, a fund was created at the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation to support the effort and to expand its reach. Program and school leaders also extend their sincere thanks to band students and band parents for their help in their fundraising. This week, our high schools hosted their first Adaptive Sports League Wait Room Session through our ASL League. Students who receive special education services are able to experience the benefits of co-curricular activities. The wait room session, which looks exhausting, consisted of dot jumps, step-ups, body squats, and one exercise of their choice. Everyone tried their best and looked forward to their next session, so onto that's great summer school activities. Today, we were able to host the Wisconsin Attorney General Josh Call and members of the Wisconsin Office of School Safety for a press conference advocating for school safety funding, specifically urging legislators to fund Wisconsin Department of Justice and school safety following the week, this week's, following last week's Joint Finance Committee decision to not increase the funding for the Office of School Safety. I was joined by Oshkosh West Principal Erin Cole, Board President, Board Vice President Barbara Herzog, Avery Pacula, an incoming senior at West, who spoke about the importance of school safety funding. The Office of School Safety has become a critical resource for our students, teachers, and school administrators, supporting our ability to implement numerous practices proven to prevent violence in our schools. We believe that the inadequate funding of the Office of School Safety will simply compromise the safety of our students and staff in schools in Oshkosh and across Wisconsin. So, we urge the community to reach out to the legislators to continue to advocate for the critical funding need for the Office of School Security. And also just continuing on, finishing up the school year and into the summer with some exciting activities in the, in the community and beyond. So, thank everybody for their support. And that concludes the Superintendent's Good News Report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Next, District Administrator's Supplemental Reports. Referendum update with Mr. Fox and Mr. Katzstein.
Good evening.
Evening. Good evening.
As we have done in the past, we're going to walk through with just a little bit more detail on our summer work, both at Vell Phillips and two of our four buildings that we are currently doing work on for our Secure Vestibule project. So, to date, in the springtime anyhow, leading up, leading up to where we are in June, Secure Vestibule project, we're completed in the last 30 days at Oakwood, of course. We've been looking at the secure vestibule, the walls and the doors that form the secure vestibule, the exterior vestibule and interior vestibule are in place, the frames are in place. Roof steel has been set, you can kind of see that from the street, and actually the roofing is complete. So, they've kind of moved their work inward a little bit now to work on rough ends on that particular facility. So, as you start to, as you look at the pictures on the top left, you can see the, that's inside of our new addition, you can see the roof steel, the basic footprint, rough ends stubbed out of the ground for plumbing and electrical. Top right is a picture of the outside, just the shell of the building. Ultimately, the bus stop is to the left on Amaro Road, and the kids will move along a sidewalk in front of that building and enter through the secure vestibule, which is kind of on the far right-hand side of that picture. On the bottom is a picture of the roof for that structure before they began putting the roofing material down. So, projected work over the next 30 days, at least with those two facilities, Oakwood and Reed. Oakwood will see the existing office demolition occur, which is where secretary currently resides. That becomes a nurses area, there is nurses station and office. Hallway between the new addition and the existing office, ceiling demolition, that gets a new ceiling, and the two different entities get tied together. Rough ends for the new addition will continue, roofing for the new addition will be completed, which it in essence is, with the exception of sheet metal. Reed Elementary saw some substantial work right after the last day of school, so we saw the asbestos abatement take place. They do need to return, but largely it is complete. They will begin demolition of all the interior spaces to prep for renovation, both of the new office and the secure vestibule, and then we're moving what was the office will then become a classroom. So, all of that renovation will occur. While it doesn't see anything right now, we do have or will have some activity at West High School, their secure vestibule, and at North. There is some activity at West, which will start to show up next month, but if questioned, there is, both of those entryways are partially shut down with activity. Vell Phillips Middle School, we're completed in the last 30 days. Ceiling installation on the second floor of the academic tower is complete, stone exterior on the north and east elevations of the main building, as well as the arts and gym area, they're actually working on the south side of the, of the gymnasium. Mirin completion. Ceramic tile installation on the second floor of the academic tower is complete, working on third floor. Site grading, as you can see going on Jackson, they're done on the west side, they're working on the north side site grading currently, moving to the east. Fire protection devising and installation is complete. There's a couple of heads they have yet to do, kind of in that events lobby, but largely they're complete with the rest of the building. Painting in the academic tower is complete. Wood floor installation in the gym is complete, it's been sanded, stained, one coat of finish on, and they should start paint next week. So, it's a pretty exciting thing. Top left is a picture of the fieldhouse. That is the gym floor without any stain on it at that time, sanded, so you get a good sense of, of the light. Top middle is the tech bar. There is one on first, second, and third floor of the academic tower. Top right is a picture of the library. They started, this is again a week or two old, so much changes so fast in that facility, but that's in the library, again, those will be the bookshelves, and they're, they were installing ceiling at that time. Lower left is a picture of the serveri and all their new equipment that they will have in that area. Bottom middle is a picture of kind of the ornate ceiling and the pattern, some of the many patterns that you'll find within that cafeteria area. This happens to be in the lower cafeteria ceiling on the far south side, as you start to enter that events lobby from the cafeteria. And then the lower right is, again, on the backside of the serveri, those are our built-in coolers and freezers. Stepping outside of the facility, top left is an eastern elevation for our arts wing, band choir and orchestra. Top center is, is a look that many of you may never have, that's actually on top of the penthouse, which is on top of the academic tower.
It's okay.
Looking down at just many of the roof lines that, that we have, and you can see all the different elevations and things that are, the busyness that's happening from the roof, so. Roof's are complete. Top right is the western elevation, so that's the western side of the school. You can see that they're doing grading, adding soils. More soils have been added since this picture was taken, so they're, they're at a point now where they could actually begin to, to start to drag out the soil and prep the seed. Lower left is on the north side of Vell Phillips, that's actually right in between A and B, it's part of A, but it's dead center in the building. You can see the planter, closest to us, you can see where they've got the handicap ramp, and they're forming that, getting ready to pour. That will ultimately have the plaza, and then the steps entering the plaza, and those are going to be your two areas where kids can enter the building from the bus drop-off. Middle right, I took that picture just to give you a sense of what the glass looks like. This is an A on the second story, you can see they've got, that's fully encasing glass now. On the curtain wall, the, the third floor is, is mostly done, but it really gives you a sense of what it looks like from the outside. I can tell you from the inside, it's pretty amazing when you're standing in that, in that collaboration space, just a full glass wall is, it's just an awesome place for kids to be. Lower right is, again, one of the pictures that you see many times, but it, it just keeps adding little pieces to it, and that's, that's a picture of the library and the administrative area underneath the library on the southeastern side of that building. So, work that will be done in the next 30 days, we expect strict food service and equipment installation to be complete in the kitchen, site grading and foundation work on the east side will be done, north side will be done, as, as is west, as we just explained. Flooring on the second and third floor of the academic tower will be complete, ceramic tile, A and B will be done, second and third floor. Trazal tile will be done, it's largely complete now, they're actually sanding on the far south side, they were working north to south, so I'm expecting them to start adding their stone sealant, and we'll see how that floor really pops once they, once they get that sealant down. Fieldhouse wood flooring, again, as I stated, it's already sanded, it's already stained, so we expect painting to occur next week and a week after, and then all the, probably four or five coats to finish. And Myron has begun their punch list in areas C and D, which are the, kind of the administrative area, first and second floor, and then special ed. So, that's really the last thing that they do is punch list. So, as we start to see them going through building, punching it out, which is really kind of more or less inspecting, identifying what's wrong, and having the trades come back, that's when you start to see projects starting to wrap up and conclude. Nate, do you have anything going on?
No, I, I couldn't hold back the smirk when Jim talked about the second floor, large glossy area. We're really looking forward to getting the public in there today, or in the future. We had the opportunity to go today, and it's just very fresh, and it's, it's an exciting building, and we can't wait for everyone to see it.
Mrs. Carolyn is not here, so I'll ask her question for you. Are you on schedule and on budget?
We are on schedule, on budget. We are still tracking our date of August 8th for substantial completion. In fact, we had a meeting today talking about our phasing of furniture. So, furniture is tracking, and we met with, with Myron, so everything is looking good. Some of the long lead time items that we were watching a year or so ago have arrived, one of them anyhow, and the other one next month, so it's all coming together.
Perfect. Nice. Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I've observed that the fencing that has gone up around the Webster site, which was similar to what was at the Vell Phillips site, it's no longer there at Vell Phillips. So, to me, that's a, a real step forward. You could actually see that building without having to look at it through a fence, and it's very exciting to see the progress.
It is.
So, thank you for all your work.
Can you tell us what all the fire trucks were doing at Webster today?
Yes, I can.
My grandsons loved them, it was very exciting.
Yeah, sort of firemen, it's, it's just an awesome experience for, for the fire department and, and ultimately PD for next week. So, you know, whenever we buy a residential home, we always, we always make the offer, or, or fire department or police department may ask, hey, can we use your building to practice? Practice entry, practice playing hoses, or something like that. So, fire department did ask if they could pull fire line throughout the elementary and kind of enter, practice entering the building and, and working room to room practicing rescue. It sounded pretty low-key to me. I was really kind of surprised when I saw all the trucks and the lights.
Oh, my gosh.
And, and the rescue trucks and, and, but what an awesome experience for them. So, really what this was, was a training exercise for fire department to be able to practice entering the building. You know, our, our fire system is all out of commission, the building is completely without power, so they, they put a little bit of smoke in the building, and, and they were practicing trying to rescue people within a, you know, that type of corporate facility. So, and again, they, every time I talk to them, they're very, very thankful, they can't stop saying, "Thank you very much for the opportunity." They kind of got their claw devices, whatever they were, they were ripping down ceilings and doing different things like they would do in a commercial building looking for fires.
That's great.
So, it's just the type of practice that they try to simulate within a fire station, but you just can't.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's what was going on. And I know Katie was putting on some information today, so.
Very exciting.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the report.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Nihans, Budget Variance and ESSER Fund Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we're getting towards the end of the fiscal year. We, this report is through May, so we've got one more month remaining on what would be the current budget year. Our operating funds, the Fund 10 and Fund 27, continue to track as they have all year. We, we've got a slight surplus to budget when, when we add in the month of, month of June. One thing to note on there, if, if you notice in the reports, June is a fairly large month. We expect about $35 million worth of expenses and about $45 million worth of revenues to come in, in, in the month. So, it's a pretty heavy month as we close out the rest of the books here in, in June. Fund 50, our food service account, is running a slight deficit. Not all revenues are in yet, it's going to take about a month and a half, two months to reconcile out all the claims, but I would anticipate, we've, we've made some equipment purchases that we didn't anticipate in budget, so I would expect that to run a slight deficit by the end of the fiscal year. Fund 80, the rec department, as is typical, they, they show a surplus in May, they will probably track a small deficit at the end of the fiscal year as well, as we have expenses go through in June with little revenue. Their revenue comes in for programming and activities primarily in May, just the way their programming works. The ESSER part of the, the report, our claims will be being made here in June and the beginning of July as we close out our audit and close out the, the books for this year and, and try to determine what, what we utilize this fiscal year and what's going to be put into next fiscal year, as we do have another year for the ESSER funds. Any questions at all?
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any committees that have reports for this evening? Seeing none, moving to the non-agenda-related public forum. An agenda-related public forum, we have nobody that signed up this evening, so we will move on to workshops. Our first workshop this evening is the Achievement Gap Reduction. And Dr. Brown, would you like to introduce your, your crew for the public?
Hi, good evening. My name is Amanda Pats, I am the principal of Jefferson Elementary School.
And I'm Kristen Berger, the principal at Roosevelt Elementary School. And we have two other principals, but they could not be here tonight, so we'll be taking on their parts.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the Achievement Gap Reduction strategies, I think all of you know and are familiar, that the schools we have that happening in is Jefferson, Roosevelt, Washington, and Webster Stanley. And again, our AGR strategy is having 18 to 1 student teacher ratio. We have instructional coaching, we have tutoring in some schools. So, if the class size would go over 18, then we also provide the strategy of tutoring, and that is available, and that happened this year at Jefferson. So, our AGR goals really are embedded in where the board set the goals this year. So, last year, you saw the literacy goals reflected the DRA scores. This year, you'll see that they're reflecting our PEL scores and I Ready, starting at third grade, and that we are expecting 80% of our students K2 to reach those reading foundational standards and in phonics and phonological awareness. And then the grade three really focused on word recognition and looking at I Ready. And then fourth, our math goals really reflect what we have done in the past as far as looking at 85% of our students meeting their scores and looking at ABMR, and you can see at each grade level what the focus area was for them. So, we have some different building-based strategies that all of our schools use within AGR. So, first of all, we do math and literacy team meetings, this happens at least monthly in all of the buildings, where the math and literacy coaches meet with those grade level teachers and have pointed conversations on the curriculum, student data. We've added in the Common Formative Assessments in Literacy this year, which really drives a lot of that discussion of strategies that are going on, how students are doing, and what we can do to help them succeed even more. We have weekly leadership team meetings with administration and the IST coaches. We utilize student-centered coaching in literacy and math, so we use those coaches to provide coaching for the teachers into the classroom based on student data. We've seen some really big growth in those units when we are using the student-centered coaching. And then we have professional collaborations that we focus on those variety of topics, so mission, vision, and value, our equity and cultural responsive practices, analyzing that assessment data through all the school year and at different times, whether it's for those goals or other things, talking about our conferring strategies and implementing them into the classroom, using our FCL curriculum and planning collaborations around that and trauma needs that our students might have, and then this year having some targeted literacy collaborations for special education teachers in the spring semester. And then within the classroom, we're able to utilize these strategies often more frequently because of that reduced class size. So, we do conferring with reading and writing with those fidelity checks, that comes a lot with the Common Formative Assessments that we've been doing this year, guided reading groups, strategy groups that are all fluid and flexible depending on how students are doing and growing. Book clubs, we utilize ABMR groups for students as they're progressing through the different levels for math. We talk about goal setting with the forward exam, go in and talk to students about setting goals for themselves with that assessment coming up. And then we also utilize morning meetings and social emotional learning to really build that classroom community and that sense of school family in our classrooms, which then leads to academic achievement, which we know as well. And then we utilize Canvas, too.
Some other strategies that we use as well is family nights. We utilize our social media through our Facebook pages and being able to connect with families in various different ways. And we also do our parent teacher conferences twice in the year. Going back to our family nights, one big hit for many of our schools is the STEM night, and this year, we actually were able to collaborate with the Winnebago Wildlife Society, and they were able to have live owls there, and students were able to dissect some owl pellets, so that's a fan favorite of our students every year. Also, we are very fortunate to have our Light at School House, which is our community learning center, which empowers our students both socially and academically by providing that unique extended learning day experience and opportunities for our, for our students and our families. Our program staff employ efforts to identify and recruit students who may be in need through academics or socially that are at risk. So, students who are not meeting grade level expectations might be a targeted student for that program. And we are very lucky at Jefferson that we actually have three qualified teachers, highly qualified teachers, that also assist with our Light at School House program, including our math instructional coach.
Okay, so we're going to get into the data. One of the features I do want to talk about, beginning of year to end of year PELs, know that the PEL scores, it's a moving target, so it increases throughout the year, and we are expected to continue to meet that moving target because we want our kids to meet those reading foundational skills at the end.
Give us an example. What, what, tell me what that means.
So, at the beginning of the year, the students may have a goal, like, you know, there's so many skills they need to know, but as the year goes on, there's more of them, so they're expected, though, like, so if you were, let's say a child comes in and they're meeting 75% of the skills, those skills are going to continue. meeting 75% of the skills, those skills are going to continue to build, and so if the students don't have those or if they don't continue the learning, they're not going to be proficient. Like, if they were proficient at the beginning of the year and they don't continue, they won't be proficient at the end. Does that make sense? For example, like, when we used the DRA in the past, we were assessing students of being like a four at the end of kindergarten. At the beginning of the year, we were saying how many were proficient, the percentage, and it was the same, trying to get them to a four at the end of the year. With PALS, with the program, if you're in the beginning of the year, you might not be ID'd on PALS, being at a lower level, but at the end of the year, you have to be at a way higher level to not be identified on PALS. So that end goal changes, so you're not shooting for that same thing. You're not really assessing the exact same thing, and that's just how the assessment is designed.
Okay.
So, I guess, I have a question. Is there, so is the beginning-of-year number, I get that, the end-of-year number, that's assessed on a totally different set of where they're supposed to be?
Yeah.
Is there an expected growth that we're, like?
We still want these students to meet the end of the, even though the target is shifting, we still want them to meet that target.
Sure. Is there an expected growth from where, like, where they're supposed to be at the beginning to the end?
It's really just making sure that our students are not ID'd on PALS, meaning that they have the foundational skills of phonics and phonemic awareness in order to.
I guess I'm trying to say, is 21% for kindergarten, is that what we expected to see for growth throughout a year, or is that not really?
Every school is going to look a little bit different there, and it depends on the students, but yes. So for Washington Elementary, you can see at the beginning of the year, 42% of the students were not ID'd on PALS, and by the end of the year, 63% of them were not ID'd on PALS. So that's a 21% goal.
Oh, I got you.
For that group.
That makes sense.
I'm sorry, can you tell those watching what PALS is, what the acronym stands for?
Yeah, phonological. Phonological.
Awareness/Literacy Screener.
Thank you, because, you know, I'm on camera, so I couldn't think of that at this moment.
I remember going through this with my kids, and, I guess, they still kind of are, but not at this level because they're higher up. And beginning of the year, they'd have to identify so many sounds, letters, whatever, be able to read, you know, whatever, and if they could, then they would be proficient or whatnot. So, and those skills progressed throughout the entire year. So from going from 42 to 63, significant, because those kids were behind the, where they should have been when they started, and then they, not only did they catch up, they caught up to the standard of being proficient by the end of the year. So that's 21% of kids that not only were a little behind, they caught up and they exceeded where you, you know, it's a good thing.
Yes. And then, so you can see where we are across each of the grade levels. Also want you to know, and you're going to hear about this in the next workshop as well, but as we're looking at the data, if we're not seeing the growth in a classroom, we're looking at that closely to see what can we do next year, so we already have plans in place for that piece. And then, that same group of kids, if they weren't making that kind of progress, what can we do with that classroom next year? So we'll talk a little bit about the interventions that we'll have in place in our next workshop.
Yeah, so are you talking about the students that were currently at that grade?
The students who are currently, like, let's say, grade one.
Yeah.
And we had that 3% growth.
So.
So we're looking at that grade, so next year in second grade.
In grade two, yes.
In grade two, what interventions are going to take place in order to really help get them.
Get them where they need to be at the end, yeah.
To move, so.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure you meant following those students versus, like, the actual classroom, yeah.
Right. And it's probably an "and."
Yes, it should be an "and," yes. I wanted to make sure it was, yeah.
I do have a question. Are the intervention plans then looking at, let's say, the students who are in grade three, and in grade three now, is that, do you look at that for the entire class, or do you look at that student by student?
We do both.
Okay.
And so, again, that is, so we have looked at it student by student, teacher by teacher, and classroom. And we've also had some time with the principals to dig deeper into the data. And then, Dr. Kuhop has been meeting with each school improvement team and principal, and really creating a plan to make sure that next year in the fall, we are ready in our school improvement effort. So very targeted with where we're going.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and then we have the math progress for the year. And again, each of those grade levels are focused on a different domain, but you can see their progress with that. Here's our Roosevelt results, so our data here. So you might see some of those lower numbers and that percentage growth, but the other big thing we've noticed is those are the highest numbers they've come in at. So, one thing that we're really seeing is that a lot of our students were coming in, retaining a lot more, so starting at that higher percentage. So even though you might see that 64 to 62, that's where that change in assessment and expectation is different than other assessment tools we've used in the past. So that is one grade level, though we've talked about targeting, like Dr. Brown had talked about for next school year, but those beginning-of-year numbers for K through 2 are higher than we've seen previously, which is also encouraging and very exciting. So, and then you can see our I-Ready growth in third grade. And then, this is our math growth with our ABMR. You can see some really, really big growth, especially in that kindergarten and third grade, with where they started to where they ended up.
What do you attribute those large growth numbers to? I know good teaching and professional development, but is there something?
Yeah, I mean, I'm really thankful for that.
And excellent school leadership.
I think it's really targeted to those high-leverage strategies teachers are using in literacy and in math, and having those teachers that are really focused on the student and using that data to move them forward. So very targeted in those fluid, small groups, to really meet them where they're at.
That's great growth.
And I think it credits to students and families, right? To be able to really engage in those community nights and be able to take that seriously as you're moving forward. So, you know, that continues to be a really important partnership for us moving forward.
Can you go back a slide? Sorry, the literacy. We've talked at Education Committee for the last two-plus years about, and we've had discussions here, that kids are coming in in kindergarten so far behind where they are. And I see that kindergarten score at 74 at the beginning of the year, and that's kind of, it's kind of an outlier for what we've seen. So is there any thoughts behind why so high from a group like that? Like, they all come out from the same 4K, are they all coming from, you know, like, what is, because that is different than what we've seen for everything else.
And my wondering is a little bit of that shift now, that this might be what we're seeing moving forward. So my son was just in 4K, and it was astounding to me, the things that he was doing in 4K now. So I think that really accredits our 4K program and the things that they are doing there now, that as we're coming through, you know, we're back to the full non-COVID situation, you know, learning that they're getting more of that instruction really coming in. So I'm hopeful that it really continues moving forward. We're also using a lot of the same strategies in 4K as we are in kindergarten and in first grade, so that's being able to carry over.
And that's a game changer, if that becomes more normal, so.
Yes, yes. So there's been a lot of work, 4K to kindergarten, like, truly the literacy department working together to look at language and making sure that we have similar, like, the alphabet, as simple as the alphabet chart for how we're forming letters, those type of things is really important for our students, our early learners.
And we spend enough time talking about what we need to do better, and that's one I look at, and I'm like, I would love to, you know, and you guys, I'm sure are, but, like, you know, the successes of how that worked. Because when you hit it, that's it, so, okay, thank you.
So continuing on, I'm very pleased to say our kindergarten and first grade had both achieved their goals of 80%. We knew that we were going to have to do some work with our second grade at Jefferson, and we are looking at the intervention program, moving in, those students moving into third grade as well. And then you can see our growth with the I-Ready data for third grade as well.
When I looked at the data, and I saw first and second grade, I couldn't help but think to myself, man, how much did COVID affect those numbers in those grades? Because they were in that critical stage of learning during that process.
We can share data-wise, not only in our district, but other districts as well. Students who are going into fifth grade and are students moving into sixth grade, that's where we're seeing the biggest hit from COVID, where we still have work to do in order to help support them, to get to where they need to be.
Bigger than the second-grade group?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Because that's, I'm kind of seeing the trend on second grade, which would have been the 4Kers in kindergarten years.
And then, this is our math data. So we have seen some pretty significant growth from our students, if you take a look at our third grade as well, and even our second grade, who didn't have any students who were proficient in moving up. So really great growth in terms of math at Jefferson. And a lot of that, I would say, is attributed to our instructional support coaches and the work that they do going in, and doing that student-centered coaching with our teachers and learning alongside of them, and those grade-level team meetings that we have on a monthly basis, looking at the data and seeing what students can do and how we can progress them forward.
And then Webster Stanley, you can take a look at their beginning, end of the year, and their percentage of growth in literacy, and then their math. Studies that we have around the Achievement Gap Reduction.
Dr. Herzak.
Thank you. I do have a question about I-Ready. We hear about that at Education Committee, and we hear about that when we're looking at curricular growth and so on. Could you clarify what that is? Is it simply an assessment tool, or does it help define instruction based on results of assessment?
It can be both.
What is I-Ready?
So we're using it as an assessment tool to know where our students are at beginning, mid, and end of year.
Okay.
And using that, of course, as part of our board policy as well, to know if our students are making those gains third through eighth grade.
What's nice about it is it breaks it down, too, so you can look at how students are doing with phonological awareness, how they're doing with vocabulary, high-frequency words, so you can drill down into the students' results and see, like, where are their strengths and where are opportunities for growth, and then that can help inform our next instructional decisions with our teachers.
Okay, I've heard of something called an I-Ready teacher toolkit. Is that what you're referring to, that allows the teacher then to choose the appropriate approach or content?
I-Ready, you can go in, and the teachers can go in and see, okay, there's this group of students who need this, you might want to think about grouping students in this way to get to the phonics piece or to get to vocabulary. So that piece is there for our teachers to utilize. We are utilizing other sources in order to help support, like, we're not saying go in, because I-Ready has a program where they could go, that would be an additional cost for them to utilize that piece of it, that we're not using that piece of it, we're utilizing our teachers to meet the needs of our students.
Okay. And over time, we've had discussions at Education Committee and around this board table over a period of years on the differences between what some might call whole language and the science of reading. Where does this I-Ready piece fit in?
I-Ready is simply an assessment tool, and so it's going to look at phonological awareness, phonics, vocabulary comprehension, and high-frequency words are the five areas that it focuses on in literacy. And so, science of reading, I mean, is the phonics, the phonemic awareness piece? Whole language, I don't know if we, we probably talk more about balanced literacy and having that comprehension piece.
Sure.
So that vocabulary comprehension would go with that, but even the science of reading would be looking at vocabulary as well. So, yeah, I think it really is a tool that will help us understand where our students are at, along with our Common Formative Assessments, to know how we're doing on a monthly basis.
And then, how does all that fit in with what Dr. Davis often refers to as rapid cycles of improvement?
Yeah, thank you for that question. The Common Formative Assessment is done monthly. You'll be hearing a little bit more in our next presentation, but we looked at our Common Formative Assessments and how that lines up with PALS or how that lines up with I-Ready, so that we know, because we want those to be similar targets, right, or above what I-Ready or PALS is saying. So, so the Common Formative Assessments are having matched that. So as we take that monthly dipstick to see where kids are at, then we're having conversations about, hey, which kids did it, which kids did not meet that proficiency mark, and what are we going to get to get under that, and working with teachers in order to figure out what is that small group going to look like in order to get the kids to meet that proficiency for the Common Formative Assessment, because the next month, there's going to be one that's building on that first Common Formative Assessment. So we need to keep building upon each one of those. And so the rapid cycle of feedback is really around twofold, making sure that our students are getting what they need at that moment, but also as a district, we're taking a look at that as well. So last year, in, I want to say it was October, November, we were looking at the results, and already Dr. Kuhop was saying, okay, here's where we're going to put in RISE, and here's why, and here's the training that we're going to do to start getting under some of those. So looking at it at a classroom level, looking at it at a district level or building level as well, and then, of course, meeting with Dr. Davis as well, so he knows where we are and can help provide supports as well, which the board did as far as providing some literacy coaches for us next year. So it's a whole system, and thank you.
So it's data-driven decision-making focused on individual student growth and learning, basically?
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
And I would add to that, also build to be responsive, right? Because historically, we would have been maybe at the end of a semester, at the end of a year, and we would have spent time over the summer doing a data retreat and then figuring out what these strategies were for this cohort in their next grade, whereas Dr. Brown had mentioned, we were able to in October, November, identify students who are right in front of us, and then be able to have interventions for those students in real time, you know, as we could put those resources in play. So really just being as responsive as we can. We'll hear a little bit more in the workshop of, you know, some things that we've learned from those Common Formative Assessments, but to me, I think that's been a really important move that our staff has done a lot of work on, and will continue to refine, but I think that's, as we build a more responsive system to our literacy and math skills, I think that those are important factors.
Thank you, and thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my questions are more just about the technical pieces with AGR-funded schools. Two of the schools on our list are, it's going to be their last school year in session, so what will happen with Washington and Webster Stanley, the funds, the AGR funds we're saving for them?
So we are able to transfer Webster Stanley's AGR status to Menominee, so that means Washington and some of, like, whoever's attending Menominee is going to get to reap the AGR umbrella.
So all the students who currently get it at Washington and Webster will continue, and will actually add more students that will benefit from this program.
That's correct, yes. All right, thank you. Mr. Currents.
That was my first question, so thank you for that. I was wondering how that would work out, so I'm glad. Having personally experienced that this year, just a couple of things, bring up Littera, worked wonders, heard a lot of positive things we talked about at Education Committee, but personally, it worked really well. The strength of the AGR schools is the low class sizes, and I, we've talked about this at Education Committee, but low class sizes matter. It's really important, and I think that from the standpoint, I mean, I would wonder, I would love, you know, you'll never know, but I'm sure the numbers that we're seeing and the growth that we see are because of that and because of that.
I think some of it is the low class numbers, but it's also about what's happening in the classroom.
Absolutely.
As far as instruction, and I will say that our literacy coaches and math coaches, working alongside our teachers, and then our principals, meeting with teams and grade levels as well, like, all of it is showing the importance of the goals that we have set forth, and all of that is what's helping support.
Yeah, there's no magic, you know, that the low class size is what caused it. I just, I'm a supporter of the lower class size is the better. It's not going to make things worse. And so, it's a piece of that, and it shows, so, thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Just make a statement. I mean, those are really formative years, and we spent an awful lot of time talking about literacy around this table, and there's, those numbers are encouraging. There's no way to look, you can't look at it in any different realm. And if those numbers continue, that's going to be really, really good for the district. And I know it's taken a lot of work, and it's taken a lot of time, and we've talked an awful lot about it. So thank you, guys, for all the work that you've done, because I'm sure, you know, I know it hasn't been easy, and those early literacy numbers are very encouraging, so thanks.
We're excited about it as well.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Our next workshop.
Our next workshop is English Language Arts Math. And Dr. Brown, if you would once again introduce your panel.
So as you know, during Congress, Dr. Linda Kuhop is here. Lisa Duxbury is the 612 Literacy Coordinator. Julie Holmes is the 4K5 Math Coordinator. And Dan Wagner is the 612 Math Coordinator. So it's a healthy process today.
So the presentation is broken up into the literacy group and then the math group. So we'll do a personnel transition, kind of like a hockey shift type thing in the middle. But we wanted to just be able to chunk that so we could kind of focus on one of those content areas.
Yep. Or if we're going to go from a musical perspective, we'll have intermission and then transition.
Snacks, too, please.
Snacks, too. So here, we are going to kick off, we're going to kick off with reading. So as we know in policy, we have reading goals and very specific reading goals along with the assessments that are going to, that we are going to use to measure those reading goals. So this first slide is demonstrating the PALS reading goals, so the phonological literacy screener. And you can see we have data going all the way back to 2016. And then what our targets and our projections are in red going to 2025. And so if you take a look at this, for 2022, our target was 60% of students would be at benchmark, at grade-level benchmark or meeting the benchmark. And we were at 58.6. This year, our goal, our target was 65%. And as a district, 66.3% of students hit the target. So from that piece on, when we look at goal measurement, we hit the target for students K through two as a district. So this is a different way to look at PALS, the literacy screener. And so it's the percent of students meeting the benchmark. When you look at this, the green columns represent the percentage of students at the district level that met the overall benchmark over time. So if you shift all the way over to the right where you have column 2023, you can see that 66.3% met from the last graph. And then in blue, we have where kindergarten specifically landed, what percentage of kindergartners met the benchmark, what percentage of first graders and second graders. And so like mentioned in the other presentation, you can see the impact of like second and third grade, you're going to see that in our data from some missed learning or learning skills from COVID.
Can I go back? So I think it relates to our earlier conversation about kindergarten. You can see, you know, when you're looking over the years, you can see somewhat of that downward trend and to be able to get back to where we were before. Like part of our conversation also was just about the strength and some continuity between our 4K programming and our kindergarten programming around just, you know, protocols and procedures, you know, from a literacy standpoint. And also, if you remember, within our long-range facilities planning, to be able to have our 4K center, you know, at Shapiro Elementary is also going to be another boost related to just continuity, professional development, like that type of programming is another time where I would expect to see a bump as we're moving forward. So we certainly want to be able to recover to where we were from 2016, but that's not a ceiling for us. That's something that we want to be able to bust through because as we're, as we're looking at the slide related to where we need to get from an overall literacy standpoint, you know, we need to be far above where we have been historically. But we're, you know, happy. So I just wanted to point that out just as the kindergarten conversation from the previous talk. Thank you.
So here you can see where we were by grade levels. So what's the percentages that are represented by those dots on the previous graph? So in 21, 22, you can see 68% of the kindergartners were at the benchmark at the end of the year. This year, spring of 2023, 74%. So when we say an increase, we had 6% more of our students were hitting the benchmark in spring. So in grade one, going from 56 to 66%. And so that we had a 10% increase in the percent of students that were hitting benchmark in the spring. And then for second grade, moving from 52 to 59%, 7% increase. When you're looking at percentages across an assessment, 5% difference or when you see a 5% difference or more is considered to be statistically significant. So in all three of these areas, this is a statistically significant increase.
Mr. Wright.
One point, I guess, because I would like, when I was reading through this, I was thinking about it in these terms.
Okay.
Six, when you, 6% equals a lot of students.
Correct.
You know what I mean? In a district like this. So I don't know the exact number of kindergarten students, but there's quite a few. So 6% more equals quite a few kids that are better off, you know, and want to do it better.
Yeah. So if you think, if you think that per grade level, let's say there's approximately 650 kindergarten students, there's 6% more of 650.
And again, this is a sliding scale or the expectations have increased throughout the year?
Yes. Correct. Correct. This is who has met the benchmark at the end of the year. So this child has met grade-level expectation. So going into our second assessment that is in policy, which is iReady. And this is the iReady reading diagnostic. In the previous workshop, the question was asked about what does iReady actually measure? So let's remind everyone that iReady, no matter, and we use it currently in grades three through eight, is computer-adaptive. So in the fall, the student, they take a fresh assessment and the assessment adjusts to try to max out or find out exactly where that student's level is in the fall. Then we do it again in the winter and it maxes out and keeps going and to find out where the student is in the winter. And then does the same thing in, does the same thing in the spring. So we really want to always compare from spring to spring when we're looking at growth for a whole grade level. Or if you're looking at an individual child and you want to say they've met growth, and we're going to talk about growth in a moment, that's measuring from fall to spring, like how much did they grow in that particular year? So on here for the target, this is saying how many students were proficient or at grade level or above in the spring. So our target for grades three through eight was 48%. We are just under that target. So 45% of students in grades three through eight met that end-of-the-year benchmark. And you can see where we need to be to hit that trajectory. So going deeper into this, by grade level, what does that mean? And you can see across spring '21, spring '22, and spring of 2023, the percentage of students that are meeting the benchmark. You can also see from our goal coming down in the blue column down the right-hand side, grade three actually hit the target for the district when it came to where we wanted to be for that particular goal. Other grade levels fell short of that proficiency goal.
So I think this is a good, a good table to point out, again, knowing where we need to be able to have resources and what skill sets we need to be able to really drill down on. And again, it's part of that, what we're seeing is that COVID effect and some of the, you know, insufficient kind of primary skills to make sure that we're getting at those phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary skill sets and doing that in fourth, fifth, sixth grade, you know, as we're, as we're moving forward. So that's part of the planning that, that we're looking at for, for next year. And in many cases, for a lot of fourth and fifth grade teachers, that's different because it's not necessarily fourth and fifth grade level type of literacy methodologies or content that you would be covering, right? It's a little bit more first and second grade, you know, types of foundational skills. So there's been a lot of professional development now and there will be as we're moving forward. To me, I think the benefit of that is even though we're seeing it in the numbers a little bit, you know, and now, I think there's always been kids in those grades that have been lower, right? Maybe not the numbers that we're seeing now, but there's always been kids in that space. So I think the benefit of this when we're on the backside, right, as we're four or five years down the line and we're really knocking this out of the park, is that we're going to have much more skilled fourth, fifth, sixth grade teachers on those core foundational skills to be able to better react and go deeper with kids. And it'll really, you know, I think exponentially get better as we're moving forward. But that's a lot of, that's a lot of work. It's resources and work and kind of growing pains. And it really, from a teaching standpoint, really takes a couple of years to be able to really be proficient at that. And so we don't have a couple of years, you know, for these students. So we're making sure that we're getting at this as, and providing the support that we can get. But I think there's some real benefit, long-term, there's some real benefit in the, in the process that we're moving through.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Mr. Currents.
So it's important to say that we did see growth from 42% to 45%. So it's, it's important to point that out that it's not like we didn't see growth, but it just wasn't as much as we wanted. So I know you were just talking about that. I assume that's a, I mean, not all hands on deck, but a, we got some work to do here, kind of a.
Oh, it's all, yeah, no, I think all hands on deck is fair.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's.
It's not like we missed it by like tenths of percentages. I mean, as.
Nope.
We talk about percentage points. That's dozens of children.
Absolutely. Yeah. No, it's an all, it's an all hands on deck. I mean, as, it's been really, you know, communicated clearly that literacy is our number-one priority academically. This is the work that we're doing. And we'll talk about the Common Formative Assessments a little bit, some adjustments that we need to make to that as we're moving forward. But yeah, absolutely. And this is a priority. And our commitment remains to that 60% number. Because we fall short, it doesn't mean we adjust.
But we expect, I mean, I think as a board, we expect next year, we hit that 54.
Right.
You know? That's, that's what we've said and.
And I think what's under, and I think a slide gets to it, but we don't see, this is mastery, like at grade level. We don't see the kids who have come from three grade levels below to one grade level below. That doesn't show up there. So that's why I feel very.
Correct.
There's promising movement to be able to, I feel like that 54 is absolutely something we can.
I think that's important to say that part of the story too, because as a kid who is below grade level, the amount of work that has been done is still, still counts.
Yes.
And, and they're all kids. They're not just data points, which.
Right.
Yes.
Give credit to Dr. Herzog for that one, I think, quite often. They're, they're real people there. But I mean, I think it's important to celebrate the previous one. The K through two is amazing. But also say at the same time that there's other places that we need to get to work. So.
It's where it's a, it's a high standard and that, and that's good because that's what we want to do.
Yep.
But I mean, like, being proficient, a kid's really, really proficient, you know? Because I've had a couple of my kids that have at times have been just below and they've been getting all As and Bs. You know what I mean?
It's a tough.
Yeah. And they're, and they're just below, have been just below a few times and their grades were really good. You know what I mean? Like, it's not a, it's not a low standard to hit that, but it's good that we're working so hard to get as many kids as we can there.
And Dr. Kuop, I really appreciated your comment about these data not reflecting children who are, say, three grade levels behind. We're here to educate all the kids. All means all. And raising someone two grade levels, even though they're still one grade level behind, will not only benefit that child, that family, our overall scores in a school, and opens the door to access to students for different courses at the high school level.
Yes.
And so I see this all tying together. And if we want to raise our standardized test scores on the forward exam, the way to do that is, one of the ways to do that is to concentrate on those kids who are behind and help them come up. And it benefits them. And then we get into improved self-esteem and engagement in school. And I just see this all tying together.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty passionate about this subject in particular, you know? And we intertwine a lot of data here as a board. So I'm thinking back to the other workshops we've had where we've gotten information about ESOL or second language learners. So we're not only teaching kids new languages in this district, we're also then having the standard to bring all of those kids, because all means all, up to these levels. So I just wanted to reference that so the community understands the complexity and the, you know, of the work that the district is doing and what it all encompasses. I mean, yeah.
The benchmark, the benchmark or the expectation is the same for all students.
I was just going to say, let's continue because we have a lot more slides to go.
And I, and I skipped to slide 15 because what, what we're all talking about right now is improved placement. So in other words, what's not represented, you're correct, what's not represented in the graph is that students that may have moved, like we said, they may have been three grade levels below and moved up, you know, moved a placement, moved to two grade levels below or just one. And so in here, this, this particular slide, and we have it for reading and for math, shows the percent of students who moved one or more proficiency levels. And it is hard. It is a lot of effort on that child and the teachers and everybody, the adults that are supporting them to move proficiency levels. This right here tells that, that story. And so you can see for third grade, this school year in 2023, 68% of our students in the district moved one or more proficiency levels. That's huge. And so you can see going down here and the increase, we did have an increase in eighth grade, but overall, you can see that movement that's not necessarily represented in a attainment goal.
That was a great slide.
Yeah. Okay. So flipping back through. So one thing that we're asked for is disaggregating our data. So for grades three through eight, this is the percent of students that are proficient. In other words, they're at grade level or above. And so you can see for students that are economically disadvantaged and non-economically disadvantaged, the percent of students that are at grade level this spring in reading. Then looking at by race. And so the races that are represented on this graph were the races that there was enough students to have a, like enough, enough numbers in order to represent them on the graph. And you can see over time, 21, 22, and 23. You may be asking why it doesn't this go back further? So 2020, we did not assess that spring. And in 2000, spring of 2019, we were not using iReady reading at that time. So there's three years of data within here. And then you can see the percent of students proficient by race over time. Then this is students with disabilities and students without disabilities. And so the percent of students that are at or above grade level over time, 21, 22, and 23.
Can you go back a slide, please?
Sure.
Two or one?
No, that's good.
This one?
I think so. Keep going.
Sorry. Go back one more?
No, no, no. No, keep, move forward.
This one.
Okay. So, so on this English learner, I've actually had a lot of questions on this. So here is the, this is the English learners versus non-English learners. So in 2021, you'll notice that 21% of English learners were at grade level. And then it looks like there is this huge drop. Here's the reason why. So in the spring of 2020, when we were in COVID and we were in at-home learning, our ESOL teachers made the decision to not exit English learners that were eligible to be exited or would be then now marked English proficient. Because number one, we didn't know what the COVID year was going to look like. They wanted to ensure that supports, et cetera, were in place. And we didn't have these, we didn't take assessments the spring of 2020. And so because of that, we held on to students that potentially could have exited and become non-ELs the next year. So then in the spring of 2022, our students that would have exited, did exit and are not in the, are no longer in those numbers. So I don't know if that, that makes sense. So students that were essentially, should have been exited or English proficient or met the criteria are still in the numbers for the spring of '21. So that's the, that's the difference there. So it wasn't that, like, there was some drastic change in like curriculum, instruction, language acquisition, et cetera. We were still meeting our student growth percentiles when it came to English learners and language acquisitions. In this case, because we didn't have any spring testing data, we made the decision to hold, hold on to students one more year.
Thank you.
Can I add something? So we have some new hires starting soon. One of them, the director for DEI. And we had that conversation a couple of months ago. Angie Lee very eloquently said, there's evidence that a position like that will directly impact literacy. The last four slides, talking about race, disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and English as, English learners. DEI is not just about skin color or race. It is about a multitude of areas. And we've seen that. So I will be very much, because that was a selling point for me to support that position. And seeing where we are, I'm going to be, a year from now, very. And seeing where we are, I'm gonna be, a year from now, very interested to see where we are. And, and I expect there to be improvements in those areas, so.
Yeah, and what that'll look like is gonna be the community engage, parent engagement, community engagement, community partnership arm of the literacy department, of the math department, right? And so that, that's the expertise that, that Mr. Miller brings, is the ability to be able to facilitate those partnerships and understand what student success looks like, know that there's a bottom line to that, and be able to, because he doesn't have the literacy expertise, which we currently have here. So it's the ability to be able to, to extend that over time is, is where we see that. And to your point, and to a multitude of constituencies, you know, and demographics.
Thank you.
Dr. Herzog?
Thank you, I would echo what Mr. Carnes just said. I'm very eager to see us narrow these achievement gaps for these subgroups. Again, it comes back to all means all. And I'm not being critical of any one individual or any group of people. We just, we, we need to change this narrative. We owe it to our students, their families, and our community. And it has a direct impact on the economics and the businesses we can attract to our community. So it's, it's really about the individual, but it has ramifications across our entire community. So I, like Mr. Carnes, will look forward to seeing a narrowing of, of achievement gaps moving forward.
And just, just to build on that, not only owe it to them, but owe it to be able to work with them.
Yes, absolutely.
So that, that's what I would expect, that'll likely be different as we're moving forward. We'll probably have to get a lot, a longer table and some more chairs, because the presentation should really be about, like, what are the partnerships that we're building? What have we learned from the data? But also, like, what partnerships are we building? Because, because these are, these are really complex, you know, generational issues that we're working through to help solve. That takes an entire village, right?
Absolutely.
And so that's what I'm looking forward to, to be able to build that as we, as we draw people in, you know, to solutions as we're moving.
Okay. So annual typical growth is the measure of, from where a student is placed in the assessment in the fall, like what grade level did they place at in the fall, and where they end up at spring. So every student, we, we strive for, every student should at least make annual typical growth, like, so one year's growth in one year's time. So I want to point out the gray column right here. And so nationally, like, every assessment has to be calibrated, and you have to think of, like, what it's actually measuring and where are the norms. So nationally, iReady sees fifty percent of, fifty percent of students hit that typical growth benchmark. So when we take a look at this, to put this into context, you can see where we were in yellow or gold for the spring of twenty twenty-two. In the spring of twenty twenty-three, there is a big difference in the percentage of students that are hitting annual typical growth. So that means, so for example, for third grade, eleven percent more of students from the year before. And so that equates to how many students? So if there's six hundred and fifty students in there, that's like seventy more students hit that typical growth than the previous year. And then looking at fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So we have work to do on eighth grade. When we start thinking about stretch growth, stretch growth is where, as like Dr. Herzog has pointed out, is where we start to close the gap, right? We have to hit stretch growth. So that means students are making more than one year's growth in one year's time. And so when you take a look at this, you can see in third, fourth, and fifth grade, we had a higher percentage of students hitting that stretch growth. And then you can see where we are with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We had stayed about the same when it came to the percentage of students hitting stretch growth. And then we talked about improved placement. That's the story of the students that they may have, they may not have hit the target of proficiency, but they absolutely improved their placement. And we're not moving anywhere to hit that benchmark or that target unless we're improving placement. So this next piece looks at improved placement. This, instead of having it divided up by different slides over time, this is just this year for the spring of twenty twenty, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. This is improved placement based on demographics. And so this, this right here to me is the leading indicator of we are starting to make movement. Now, and so if you take a look at, we have improved placement in every single subgroup for students.
It's impressive.
Yeah, so like, to me, this is like, this is the slide. So this tells more of the story than hitting the attainment goal.
I have a question about eighth grade, because we keep seeing issues with eighth grade and issues, numbers that we'd like to see better. The one before talked about decays in eighth grade. Are we doing anything with that group going into high school now? Like, are we gonna take care of them when they hit high school, that they're not where we'd like them to be?
Yep, so, so we're gonna answer that here in just a second. But I also want to talk about eighth graders in general when it comes to taking assessments. So we, we, so, so having had a middle schooler, six, seven, and especially eighth graders, especially in the spring, struggle with really truly understanding, like, oh, I have to, I have to do this. And I'm not, I'm not excusing that away, I, I'm just saying that, like, we need to keep that in mind.
So we've looked at that stuff before and seen that, and the conversation was, the kids, kindergarten, second, third, they're not where they want to be, but by the time they get to high school, they're, they're where they want to be. And eighth grade was always a part of that. We could see that trend the last couple of years, at least I have, have looked at it. The, the thing that's concerning to me is not just eighth, it's fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth right now. We have a five-year window there.
Correct.
That looks very similar.
Correct.
And so.
And, and pieces of that are the lagging skills and, from, like, from pandemic learning. I mean, we just have to be, whether it was engagement, non-engagement, like, the, the learning, the learning mode was not right for the student, there's a, there's a lot of factors that come into it. And so a lot of data we were looking at directly, like, in COVID or right after COVID, we're feeling the impacts now.
And I'll add to this, you know, I mean, eighth graders are gonna be eighth graders, right? Like, that's not gonna change, we can predict that. What we need to do, and we are doing, as a credit to our staff, is to be able to take responsibility as a system. That's not where we want them, right? And what can we do? So we've taken some of the, and we'll talk about this, but taken some of the, the strategies that we're looking at in early literacy aspect of it, those strategies still apply, looking at common formative assessments, looking at those rapid cycles of improvement, getting those into our sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade classes. So we're in that, we're, we're still in that skill-based mentality, right? It's just a, you know, it's just advanced skills, and in some cases, not advanced skills, but to be able to help secure that, like, those results still matter. So I think sometimes we get caught up in the, well, you know how adolescents is, you know how middle schoolers are, you know how high schools are. So part of what we're taking away in our development and our maturity and our literacy programming, K-12, is that, that like, well, what are we gonna do type of thing? And say, this is what we're doing, we are building this from the ground up, we know our 4K is making progress. We know that these strategies focus on skill development, because as much as, you know, it can be difficult for sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, you know, teachers to be able to work through that, when, when you get in the habit of looking at skills and skill development, and you get in the habit of seeing yourself succeed at some of these skills that maybe you have never been told that you are very good at reading, right? And you've got this ultra-sensitive middle school complex of who's sitting next to you, you've got all that going on in your brain, right? A safe spot to be able to land, that's very, very empowering for kids, is I'm better yesterday than I was, that I, I'm better today than I was yesterday at this specific skill. And when we're talking about that as a literacy skill, like, that is absolutely life-changing for kids. It is absolutely the spot that we're gonna look at and lean into. And that's what Lisa's gonna help be able to, to bring us to the next level as we're bringing that to our sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. Because it's, it's, it's not different. Like, from a system standpoint, these strategies are not any different. It's, it's a, building a responsive system. And I think once we, and that'll take some growth, but once we can get to that point, I'm confident that's where we're gonna continue to see this bump. And, and also see that in our other indicators regarding behavior, right? Because we know a lot of adolescent behavior is because of disengagement in the classroom, because I don't know, I don't know what to read, or I'm not at that same reading level, right? So the more that we can build this confidence in some of these really core skills, literacy, and we'll hear from math next, that, that is really, really important work that has ramifications across our system.
Does the grading change for middle school have any, will that have an impact here of how maybe, how teachers teach or, or how, you know, we work through this?
Yes, and, and let's, let's turn this over to Linda and Lisa, and I think we're going to, we're going to hit exactly your question.
So we'll, we'll start just, we have, to, to, for elementary, some reflections in our next, action steps next. So first of all, reflections on the data that you just saw at the K-five level, is that we, we can see it in, in the, the chunky data, like our summative data, we can see the, the growth that we've made, especially at K-three. So professional development on high, the high-leverage strategies that we worked on that had everything to do with phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, really supported instruction as evidenced by, by that, that data.
And so just to pause, so Dr. Herzog, just to connect that comment with what you had said before, just related to phonics or to, to science of reading skills. But we have, we've seen bumps in our proficiencies because of our focus on that.
Thank you.
That's directly connected to ESSER dollars that were invested in our literacy work. So I just want to make sure that we can solidify those, those connections.
I think the other thing, I was thinking, when you were talking about iReady, when, when teachers get iReady, they see these strands of the different components of the reading process. They see phonological awareness, they see phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, information on literature, and information comprehension, for informational text. I think of that as the reading rope, you're, you're, all of them work together. You're not going to have high comprehension scores without high other. So knowing that we can dig down into those different strands, and that's what we kind of look at as we're, as we're through it. So it really is a, is a nice tool for us to analyze the data. And to check, which is next, is how, how are our monthly formative assessments? We unpack these big reading foundational standards, we unpack them into, what are we gonna measure monthly to say, you're on target along the way as you meet these? And if you're not, we are gonna do what we need to do to, to assist and, and support you to get there. And if you're already there, we're gonna continue your learning, because you deserve a year's growth as well. And so we, we, we looked at that, we had, we, we created those this year, pretty much on a monthly basis. Our literacy department team then went to their schools and they worked with their teachers to say, this is what we're gonna be testing this month, and, and kind of got that process rolling. And really what we found is it did provide this process to make sure that we're, we're improving along the way. What was really interesting is that Dr. Brown and I had fun digging the data, then going month by month. We have all, all the data from all the schools, we keep it very, you know, up and center, a dashboard for us, and very open to, to see where they, every school was at every grade that we knew how many kids mastered each month. So then we took a look at that and did an average as a district of how did, how did our monthly assessments match to the rigor of PALS? So if they don't match, or they, they don't match, then we're, we're measuring the wrong thing. We have to, we have to know that. So here, what we, what we found is at K-two, and that's where we really saw really great growth at K-two, we saw that we were actually, our rigor of our monthly assessments were actually higher than what PALS measured, which is a good thing, because, because we're going to the grade level standard that, that we have adopted. So we have kept that, and, and with that, we had, we, our students performed lower on our monthly common informative assessments than they did on PALS. So it shows we're, we've got the right stuff. So that feels really good, and I think teachers are, we have a lot of thanking us for, I now know what we're doing. I, no, I mean, there was a little bit of hesitancy, of course, at first, and, and a lot of us would be that way. But now it feels like we really have this, this place and we have momentum. Third grade, it was almost spot-on. So where our, where our third graders landed on iReady, our average across all the months, it was almost spot-on. So we then can say, okay, we are in the right spot for this. Now what we have to do is continue, continue to lift up that instruction and meet where the students are at. Now we know, we have, this is the great part, our second graders are coming in higher for third grade. So we should see a bigger growth. So that's where, that, that's exciting, where I feel like those benchmarks are in our sight and we can start thinking through breaking that ceiling. Fourth and fifth, we know that we now, we, our students did, did, they did better on our monthly informative assessments than they did on iReady, which means, and we already kind of knew this was gonna happen, we need to increase the rigor, we're working on revisions of that. That will help teachers teach up to that rigor. We have, we already have some, some of our literacy work of the kind of tools and resources that we want to, to support our teachers with, especially with vocabulary. So all of that, and I think what's wonderful is our teachers can see that we are using this organically, like, we, we know, we have, we're gonna change it when, when it tells us what we need to do in the classroom and what we need to do for our students, so.
Okay, so our literacy plan for twenty-three, twenty-four, as Linda was saying, we had gone into classrooms doing observations to inform what we needed to do as far as professional development. This last spring, we also introduced learning walks into our schools. And part of that gave us some data about what we need to do. So one of the things that was noted is that sometimes when teachers were falling short of time, they were choosing either phonics or shared reading. You can't choose one or the other, you have to have integrity and do both. And so that's something that we will make sure is emphasized next year, is we absolutely have to meet and do both of those pieces. As Dr. Kuhop was saying, we do need to calibrate our common formative assessments at grades four, five, and I know that is work that Linda has already started with her team, and they were working on that this spring, and Linda's gonna be continuing that this summer. Professional development this next year is gonna center on going deeper in the phonemic awareness, the phonics and vocabulary, and we're going to do that through a focus on writing. So we'll continue doing those things in reading, but then go deeper with all of those within the writing. Data, as it did this year, we're already looking at it. As I said, Dr. Kuhop has been working with each of our school buildings to really look at where the data lies, and then where do we need to know, like, day one? Where do we need to start the RISE program? And where do we need to put student-centered cycle into place? So that our student-centered coaching into place in order to really lift the areas that we're seeing within the data. So that's really exciting. I don't know if we've ever been this proactive before going into the school year, so it's super exciting.
Because I think too often, we, we, it was about October that we're like, we gotta get something going, and you know how that, that is of, like, then, then you're still a few weeks out from doing it. We are, we are poised to begin right away with knowing what cohorts we have and what, what some of the data is telling us that we need to, to support some of our newer teachers. There's teachers that are not getting a great impact with our students. We, we've got student-centered coaching cycles ready to go from day one, so that's exciting.
And then we're going to continue doing the classroom observations, the walkthroughs, the common formative assessments, because we know, as we're doing those every month, that's informing us of what our next steps need to be, so that we can pivot in any of the areas.
If K, K through two keeps performing like it is, and new grades come in and keep performing like it is, like they are, and we keep making improvements in the older grade levels, this, the numbers are just gonna rise naturally.
Yeah, for sure.
As these kids go through the system. I mean, there's no other way to mathematically put it. That's what will happen if we keep, you know, keep those types of numbers on trajectory.
Thank you very, very much. This has been absolutely fantastic, and I think we move on to math now?
Well, actually, Lisa's gonna.
Oh.
She's twelve.
I'm sorry.
Nope.
Well, you've seen a preview. And it hurts my heart to say that we did not meet the goal, we, we are not where we need to be. And particularly when it comes to vocabulary, this is something that we've known for a few years, that that's a place that we need to focus our attention. So we know that moving into next year, we discussed at education committee that we had a few, that we have other plans for how it is that we move forward with a field study. But we also know that we have to keep our eye on vocabulary instruction. And so one of the things that we're going to do is, at middle school, we are going to implement StudySync ELA, ELA meaning English Language Arts. And we're implementing that because we have the teacher buy-in for it, and because it's the first curriculum that I've seen that is so comprehensive that.
is so comprehensive that it has everything a teacher could need and then some. It has scaffolds for our special education students. It has scaffolds for our English language learners. It, as a tool, has everything there that we could possibly ask for and stop asking the teachers to create. And so there's teacher excitement for that. There is professional learning that's going to happen this summer around that to get teachers up to speed so that they can hit the ground running in the fall. I think if, if you go back and look at the slideshow and think about what it is that K five is doing that six, eight is not, it's all about those high leverage pieces. It's all about within those student workshops, are we really providing time for the teachers to do the small group targeted instruction? And what we know that right now, the answer is no. We have a lot of whole group instruction taking place, but we don't have that targeted small group instruction. And that's really where we have the ability to get at all of those different subgroups. That's where we have the ability to differentiate from different needs. And that's currently not happening. So also tied to that then is the student centered coaching. And if the student centered coaching isn't happening, that's part of why those small groups aren't happening. And so everything is all tied together. But when you look back at K five, they have the student centered coaching in place and it is going, and it's a well-oiled machine, and they know exactly where they need to go with it. I know that at secondary, we need to get it started. We relaunched this for the fourth time in March. We are just having trouble getting it launched and getting it started in the middle schools and high schools. So we know that the student centered coaching is a really important piece to helping those targeted small group instruction areas happen. And then the other thing that we were not able to launch was the common formative assessments, that whole rapid cycle of improvement. That was something that wasn't able to be launched at secondary at the start of the fall either. And so when we, when we, when we look at the improvements and the strides that they've made, it's those high leverage strategies that are in place that we just have not been able to launch at secondary. And I guess specifically, I'm talking about middle school. We have a variety of challenges and opportunities to work out at middle school. One of the things, you know, we talk about how kindergarten, right, Mr. Kearns, of how we talked about for years at education committee about how our kindergarteners were coming in lower than ever. That's our reality at sixth grade. And so now we're also planning for, so what do we do at sixth grade? Because my sixth grade teachers are not equipped to teach phonics. They don't know. They don't even know. We need my phonemic awareness. So a lot of what has happened in the last two years, Dr. Hertz, when you mentioned the tools for instruction within iReady, that's where a lot of our middle school teachers were going with the literacy coaches is going to those tools for instruction. So that when a child showed up as being low in phonics and they didn't know what to do because that wasn't my, what my training in college, that's where they were going to those tools for instruction. Because it would tell you, okay, if students are struggling in phonics as a sixth grader, here are some things they immediately need to know. And that was new learning for our sixth grade teachers, for some of our seventh grade teachers. And something, right, the reality that that was some learning that they had to do because, in order to meet students where they were coming in. So we know that we have, we know that we have some incoming needs that are unlike anything that we've ever seen before. And then that also ties up our instructional coaches. So the literacy coaches, there's one at each middle school. And they're the ones that we heavily rely on to start the student centered coaching to do that. They've actually had students or coaching training in their master's programs. So they're the most equipped of all of our instructional coaches. But what's been happening, the trend, is that there are so many needs that they can't take care of within their two intervention classes, that their entire day becomes intervention. Like we've literally been at the point the last couple of years where a coach has their entire day in intervention. And it's supposed to be two hours of intervention, four hours of coaching. And it's been completely taken up by intervention. And to the extent in some cases where we had to hire retired teachers, retired reading teachers to come in and take care of needs they have that still didn't get taken care of with that 1.0 FTE. And so I, I say that it feels like it's a tangled web right now, because everything is interconnected and everything feels really jammed up to me. Everything feels like, it's not that we don't know what to do, but we don't know how to do it all the time with the FTE that we currently have.
So the great opportunity that we have moving forward is we have great examples from K five, right?
Yes.
We've got a clear purpose from the board, you know, and clear direction from the board about where we're going to achieve. And to be able to work through that professional development, to get some research, you know, where we needed to, and to be able to develop those common formative assessments. Because I think that, that provides the clarity of targets that we'll need to be able to work through. And again, we, you know, we know that we have students coming in, you know, at some lower levels in some of those primary skills. So, so those are, those are opportunities. So there, there's struggles, but there are opportunities as we're, as we're moving forward.
I'll just say we, we had this conversation about having enough staff to do what we need to. I'm assuming that, you know, we're planned for that for the future because we sat around and discussed that a month ago. So
Yes.
Hearing that, I'm assuming this is going to be a different story this year with staff where we need them to be. And we've invested into those areas. So.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I find it a little alarming. I'm hoping that the education committee can get maybe some more updates than we normally get to make sure that we're on track, that we don't get to May and say, well, just didn't happen this year. I, I think that's really important for education committee to know that it is happening and that steps are in place to make it happen.
And Lisa has started like the common formative assessment pieces she's been going through and figuring out iReady and how that's all going to fit. So like there's work.
It's done.
Yeah. I was here to say that. So we know that that work has started. Lisa's done a lot around student centered coaching with the principals and with the literacy coaches as well to really get that started. So I think the foundations are there, that those things are all ready to now launch. So that's the exciting piece.
And then Mr. Kearns, your question about also what's happening with the current ninth, or current eighth graders going into ninth grade?
Yeah.
We decided to roll up iReady into ninth grade because iReady is something now that they're familiar with. They've taken for a number of years. And we're going to start that common formative assessment process with those rapid cycles of improvement, even up with the freshmen.
Okay.
Because we know that at eighth grade, they weren't where we needed them to be. And so we are cycling off that whole rapid cycle of improvement into ninth grade.
Yeah, it all, it all, I mean, we're trying to get them ready for college career and community ready. And these kids need to be ready to take the AP classes as soon as possible because this, this matters. So I appreciate that.
Okay.
That's all right. I, I really appreciate these action plans. I've been on the board for 10 years. I've heard a lot of reports over that period of time. And I really appreciate the, the action plans and the focus on all students. I sense more of a feeling of urgency to benefit current students and those coming up through the ranks and working together, helping all students be more successful in our schools. So I thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. It's, what you're providing is very impactful and it's really the core of, of our being. So thank you.
Thank you.
Beth, I like the idea that Dr. Davis, maybe somehow there's some reporting back to education committee. If it's a couple of times throughout this, you know, even if it's just a couple minute report or something, you know, I, I think that's important.
Welcome.
Yeah, coming over to math. So we have Julie Holmes, our for K through five math coordinator, and Jen White here, our six through twelve math coordinator, joining us. So for math, this graph should look familiar. Then even though, even though math is not in policy, we went ahead and paralleled the same type of target and goal and data for mathematics. So if you take a look at this, this is the percent of students proficient or above. Our target for the spring of 2023 was 50%. We are at 46% at grade level, grades three through eight this spring. And then you can see where our target is projected to be for spring of 2025. So underpinning that, this is the percent proficient in iReady math in grades three through eight by grade level. And you can see the percent of students, remember that are at one or more at grade level or above. Going across that, blue being the spring of 2023 and the percentages. Then breaking this down, so in subgroups, so this is economically disadvantaged for math in grades three through eight, the percent of students proficient or at grade level or above. And you can see that over time, 21, spring of 22, and then spring of 23. Then it's percent of students at grade level or proficient or above by race. And you can see the impact of that over time with percentages. For iReady math, for students with disabilities, this is grades three through eight and students without disabilities, the percent of students proficient, in other words, at or above grade level in the spring of 2023, and then 21 and 22 prior. And then you're going to see, just like we discussed with English learners, you're going to see also that piece. It's less profound in mathematics because there's not, you can, there, you can perform math computation without necessarily.
And it's a universal language.
And it's a universal language. Thank you. So, but you can see that same difference between 21 and 22. And once again, that impact of holding students as ELS for one more year going forward. And then just like in reading, nationally, iReady math, the national typical growth is 50%, are showing typical growth per year. And you can see where a percentage of annual typical growth is for this school year. And you can see some little, little bit of inconsistency in math between like increases and decreases. And taking a look at, remember that 5% either way is statistically significant. Let me take a look at that. Once again, with stretch growth, we have to be meeting stretch growth if we're going to look at closing gaps. And you can see where we are. In particular, I'll point out with middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And Jen will talk more about our action steps that we will be doing with secondary and middle school. So, but going back to improved placement, this is the story that's pining underneath. So a student may not have been at grade level or above, but this tells the story of what percentage of students actually moved proficiency levels. Like they, they moved, but may not have hit that grade level target. And so once again, shout out to third grade, 71% of third graders improved placement. And you can see fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth, seventh, and even our, even our eighth graders, we went up to 47% of eighth graders improved their placement. And once again, we'll get to Jen, who will talk more about where we are with, with middle school. And then this is just comparing spring of 2022 to spring of 2023 with improved placement. And so you can see with economically disadvantaged, with two or more races, students with disabilities, you can see that improvement in places. But you can also see that in some of our subgroups, we actually had a decrease in the percent of students that were improved placement. So reflections, I'm going to turn it over to Julie.
So when we start to think about what did we do, what's been happening in 22, 20, the 22, 23 school year, you can see that some of that is inconsistent. We can talk about where our focus has been for the last year and a half and how that can impact other subject areas. So wink, wink. But sometimes that happens. Also knowing that we started second semester with a real focus on math in the elementary level. So that gave us that opportunity to be thinking about what are those high leverage practices? So we've used that language that literacy is using of high leverage practices. What are those same high leverage practices that you see embedded in your universal curriculum? And how can we be sure that we're using those across K five? And then Jen, I'll let you talk about your assessments.
So the resource that we have, CPAM, it, it leads it up to the teachers and the school district to create their own assessments. I mean, it has an assessment bank where teachers can choose test questions. And over the past few years, I believe that we've been choosing test questions that weren't as rigorous as they should have been. And therefore, our students may be getting As and Bs and not doing well on iReady and on our Wisconsin Forward. And so over the last couple of years, we've really been taking a deep dive and looking at what does the grade level standard actually expect students to be able to do in sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade? Instead of creating tests that students did well on and teachers and students felt good about, we really needed to start looking at what is that grade level expectation? So over the last couple of years, we've been revising and making our secondary assessments mostly at the middle school level, more rigorous to make sure that they align with the grade level standards. And through that work, I believe our teachers know the standards much, much better than they ever have. Because instead of just relying on this test bank from the resource, we go back to the Wisconsin standards for mathematics and really break it down into what our students need to be able to do. So that's the work that we've been doing the past couple of years. This year, to kind of get to that common formative assessment, the middle school grade levels were tasked with creating one common assess, one common formative assessment that they would be given mid, mid chapter. So about once a month, give a common formative assessment. We just want to make sure that our students are on track instead of waiting until that end of the unit test and then getting that information. We want to know along the way how they're doing. That was very successful. Our goal is to create more of those common formative assessments. And the idea is somewhat similar to what they talked about with literacy is using those assessments along the way, using the information to adjust our instruction, make small groups. What do we need to do to make sure students are on target to meet the end of the year, our end of the unit goals?
So specifically, when we think about coming up the action plan for elementary mathematics, we're going to continue a focus on K two on number and operations in base 10. We know students need the infamous basic facts and understanding of parts and wholes and what goes together to make five, 10, and 20, so that we can leverage that to expand their knowledge and thinking and understanding of how math works. Three, five is a conceptual understanding of fractions. So you'll see that that's where fractions start to come in. And we've been really good at a part, whole understanding of fractions. But we have to get to that next level of developing understanding of fractions as numbers. Where do they fit on a number line? They're not just, how many pieces of pie do I get, right? If I have to share with a few friends. So we're really going to develop, work hard to develop that understanding of fractions, as that's been a strand that has caused us a lot of thinking and some hardship as we analyze some of our data. We are going to also implement learning walks for math. I've been doing classroom walkthroughs with principals, but it'll be a really nice opportunity to do learning walks now to also broaden that understanding for us to be able to get some feedback and get some insight into some things that are happening in, in more classrooms. We have, we started one district, one book last year. So last spring, so that just this past semester, we worked with grade level collaboration on Fridays, where every, every teacher in the district read the same chapter or two, depending on which Friday it was. And then we had some opportunities for them to collaborate, work through some slides and sharing their learning. And then we connected it directly on their Wednesdays to how does this impact my classroom? So we're going to continue that because that really will help them see how do they teach, I've heard you all say it, all means all. How do we teach all of our kids math so that we can close those gaps as well? So I look forward to working with you to think about what our district-wide math goal could be. I have a few ideas of things that I've been toying around with. And I'm hoping that through the work that we do this year, we can narrow that down. I'm excited about common formative assessments for math as well. I have started again toying around with that a little bit. I'm really glad that literacy went first. They have some great forms, some great spread. They have some great forms, some great spreadsheets, some things I can mirror, that's really nice. And then I would like to consider going forward with some type of a pilot of Number Corner and Bridges as Bridges is coming out with a third edition now. So to be able to have those complementary curriculums come out and, and think about strategies for a pilot will be a way that we can continue to move our kids forward.
Okay, the plan for secondary mathematics. We're going to continue on focusing on those pre-algebra and algebraic skills for grades six through nine. Of the 35 to 40 math standards at each grade level, we have chosen essential standards at every grade level that we focus on, and many of them in grades six, seven, and eight focus on that algebraic thinking, expressions, and equations. We will continue to calibrate our common sumative assessments and our common formative assessments to make sure that they align with grade level expectations and standards. Want to make sure that our data aligns with I Ready, similar to as Lisa and Linda talked about earlier. How can we make sure and take those formative assessments and dipsticks along the way to see that, to ensure that our students will be ready to be successful on I Ready at the end of the year? A year ago, our math staff took part in a professional development by CPM. It was called Building on Equity. And we too had a common book that the staff shared, and it was called Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain. And that, that two-day PD focused on how to engage all students in the math classroom. And our CPM really has great engagement strategies. Sometimes we just forget to use all those engagement strategies. So that PD was just really kind of reignited our, our desire to make sure that we're getting every student's voice in our math classroom. And we're going to continue to talk about that, just as we did this year on our PD Fridays. We would always spend some time revisiting that book and revisiting that PD. We're going to continue that also to make sure that all of our students are, feel that they can do math and are part of the math classroom. Switching to proficiency scoring in the middle school is really going to give us, teachers an opportunity to give specific feedback to students. I think Dr. Davis mentioned earlier of a student feels pride and is motivated when, like, today I can do something better than I did last week or the day before. And this meaningful feedback from teachers is really going to help our students take ownership of their learning because our, we're going to have very clear learning targets. When we give a formative assessment, this is our goal. And when we give that feedback to the student of how they did on that formative assessment, this is where you are, this is what you can do to improve, to reach that goal. So that's going to be a big part of our work for the middle school teachers. And we do want to explore updating our math curriculum. CPM has come out with an updated version called Inspiring Connections, and we would like to pilot that sometime this coming year.
I like the thought of piloting curriculum because I think we've seen as a country, I mean, I've read a lot of articles, they attribute some literacy gaps towards lots of different school districts or states adopting curriculum that wasn't pushing students forward. And now, you know, as a country, we're pivoting and we're going to see changes, I think. But, you know, I mean, if we don't have the right curriculum, the right processes, and the right system, it's hard to, hard to make the progress we want to make. You know, we got to, I think every school district, country as a whole, you know, we got to make sure we're getting the right curriculum, you know, that is proven and effective and works.
Something, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt you.
Oh, that's okay. Just like with the science of reading, Mississippi's literacy scores were falling, falling. And then all of a sudden, a shift comes. And all of a sudden, everyone's like, oh, wow. You know, like, we're helping hundreds, probably thousands and thousands of children. So I mean, I think it's just so important that when we make those decisions, we make the right ones.
And I think our curriculum resources have evolved as well. So when I think about the work that Bridges is doing and why they are releasing a third edition, it's with that equity mindset and it's different. It's also a nonprofit organization, which I think is, sets it apart from some of our other curricular resources that we have used historically. So their investment or what they earn goes back into developing and thinking about what's new and what, what's the latest research. And that's the same with CPM. So I think that kind of sets those companies apart, but definitely with a mind of what is happening. And so that was part of why we chose the Taking Action book for our elementary teachers is because that is some of the work that Bridges based their third edition on, is some of that work that was written, published by an author from UW-Milwaukee about equitable teaching.
Mrs. Solajie.
Yeah, I was just kind of going off what Mr. Wright said. When we first adopted Bridges, didn't we see that pretty significant growth year after year?
We did.
I remember that. That's back when I first started on the board.
And that year that we piloted it, you probably remember, we had every pilot classroom outscored district and state average.
Yeah.
As well.
Are we still seeing that with Bridges? I've wondered if after we, because now we've been using it, what, five?
Seven.
Years? Seven, yeah.
So if you go back and you look at your data, so like the, when we, you, the first year that we used I Ready universally as a diagnostic was in 2018, and you can see we're just now getting back to where we were pre-COVID, using Bridges and Pouch Preparatory Mathematics. But things have shifted, things have really shifted through that, that you can see the impact during that time. And we don't have internal data. Prior to that, we were using Forward exam pieces of that.
Mr. Kearns.
Dr. Davis, I'll accept your lead on this, but I'd love to know when we can get math put into policy. Because, I mean, I know we're, we're getting there, I just, you know, we're still following guidelines in that way, but, you know, when we can get to that place. And I don't want to overwhelm when we're doing all of, you know, adding as much as we do with literacy, but.
Right.
There's, there's an obvious need.
Yeah, so we'll be working with this team to be able to, to bring that to the Education Committee, talk about what our options are to be able to solidify it in, in policy. And I, I think you've heard some of the common language that I look at from a system standpoint with common formative assessments, you know, and that, those rapid cycles of improvement. Like, that can be, will be applied, you know, in the same way that is in literacy. Like, part of what we need to also remember from a system standpoint to, to mature as a system, especially when we're talking about K-5, and we're talking about the same, the same teachers that are implementing the literacy.
Right.
Yes.
Work, you know, we'll be implementing the math work, right? So, so there's a process, you know, to this.
That's, that's.
To make sure that we're maturing.
Yeah.
But what, what I'm excited about, one, we get great leadership, as we do with literacy also, but with math, to be able to be really clear about what our expectations are to boards, we'll do that this coming year. The next step then, again, I think as, as we think about our K-5 teachers who have seen success using the common formative assessments, that, that language isn't going to be new. Like, that's going to be like, oh, I use I Ready, and I use it in literacy, so now I use it in math. So I think the, I think the ability to be able to get up to speed with math, you know, is going to be expedited by our work in literacy, just because, again, we're using the same language, same processes, which is intentional.
Good.
As we're moving forward.
Okay. Thank, oh, sorry.
Well, we were just going to leave you with a few key points. So we know that we need to continue to be aware of the urgency in closing achievement gaps across math and literacy and within those subgroups. So we, that is a definite focus. Part of that is really developing our partnerships with families and community partners and continuing the bias training for staff to reduce our achievement and opportunity gaps in both literacy and math. We are really excited about where our early literacy learners are right now. We feel like that's really promising and we just can build upon that piece. And we believe one of the key indicators there is not only the common formative assessments, but student-centered coaching is key to that. So.
Thank you very much for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more.
Thank you.
Great discussions. Okay, next up is the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or as discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted on with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. So moved.
Second.
That was Barb and Christopher. Call the roll, please.
Herzog.
Aye.
Kearns. Aye.
Solajie.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Or Dewitt, who carries.
Okay. Request for future agenda items. I think we have a lot already. Any announcements?
I have one.
Dr. Herzog and Mr. Kearns.
Just a reminder that the WASB Summer Leadership Institute, focusing on safe schools, healthy students, and board governance, is July 14th through the 15th at the Green Bay Hyatt Regency. Registration is due by next week, Friday, the 23rd. So if you have any inclination to go, I would encourage you to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kearns.
Third year in a row, I'll give a shout out that we are in the midst of Pride Month, which is very important for LGBTQ plus community members and students. There's an event on Sunday, June 25th at the Leech from 1:00 to 8:00, I believe. So if anybody's interested in coming out and celebrating, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We are now going to adjourn to an executive session. Executive session will be considering disciplinary data of a specific person engaging conduct while at school, a while under the supervision of school authority which endanger the property, health, or safety of others, and who engage in conduct constituting repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
It was Kearns and Wright.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. All right.
All right.
Aye.
Solajie.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
We have adjourned to a committee session.
That was.